The bid process doesn't speak to how the electricity is generated.
Okay.
It only speaks to what they'll charge us per kilowatt, and that's the, you know, that part of it isn't complicated. That part of it is very straightforward. It's just, it doesn't matter where it comes from. All that matters is how much we pay when it gets to our buildings.
So we don't really have any way of tracking the sources of the power? We're really concerned with the rate that we would be charged by the consortium or the generating?
Yeah. Yeah. My understanding is, and I don't know how you could possibly track this, but once the power is dumped into the grid, then
It's just open power.
You're just paying for what you use, and it's only the cost of providing that.
Okay.
I just want to be clear on what our strategy is, just make sure we're all in agreement here. The strategy is, is that we will continue to research this issue. There could be another option for us that we're not familiar with at this point, or haven't fully researched. However, in order to protect our interests and those of the taxpayers, we believe that the $3,600 is a wise investment at this time. We don't need a budget amendment to do it, but I want to make sure that Pat's authorized that, as our fallback position, that we'll, we know for sure that the co-op rate will be less than the default rate. That's guaranteed. So in the absence of any other alternative, and also in order to assure ourselves a position in that, we want to move forward with the co-op $3,600.
Pat, on the agenda tonight, this is as a discussion item. What are you looking for from the council tonight?
Well, because there's not time for the council as a body to take action before the deadline, we need, this is what Bruce said, we need, it's a matter of letting you know where we are and finding out if there's any problem with our strategy, because we, the deadline is looming. If ever we second, we have to pony up to $3,300 or $3,600. And that's not a commitment to sign the contract, but that money is spent for all practical purposes. It's not a deposit.
So I guess, I guess in the absence of any concerns, this is the path that we're going down. Or you can do a motion.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'm sort of looking at Jim here as to what the appropriate, or is this within the mayor's prerogative to, it's within the mayor's prerogative anyway, her budget authority? Okay, so, so we just need to say, sure, get us the best deal, right?
Get the best deal.
Yeah. I move that we get the best deal.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Dennis to get the best deal. All those in favor?
Aye.
The best deal. Opposed? Thanks, Pat.
Good job, Pat.
We have a presentation. This is for Illinois Route 130, High Cross Road Corridor Plan. I think we got, we have lots of people here to help us out. Take it away.
If I could just introduce this item quickly. In 2003, City of Urbana received an Illinois Tomorrow grant from Illinois Department of Transportation in order to study the future transportation needs in the Route 130 corridor in East Urbana. It's for an eight-mile stretch from on the north Ford Harris Road to, on the south Old Church Road. And since 2003, we contracted with the Regional Plan Commission. We've been working since 2003 on a plan. We did suspend for a period of time the plan in order to take advantage of the 2005 comprehensive plan, so that we could build upon that plan and make sure that the plan's recommendations are integrated within the Route 130 corridor plan. I'm just going to point out a couple of items really quickly that I think are important to know. Again, this builds on the comprehensive plan rather than recommends changes to it. Throughout the process, there was a public process that didn't just take into account public comments, but actually used recommendations from the public to come up with alternatives from the get-go, and then used sophisticated traffic modeling to ask what-if questions. You know, the public said they would like to do this. What would be the implications of that in the future? What would be the future traffic if we did this? Is that, is that helpful for what we're trying to achieve? I think that's pretty exciting, actually. The other item is that preferred alternative is not just for cars, but also for bicycles, pedestrians, and buses. And if you look in Figure 2-1, that really summarizes the preferred alternative. And then the other major item to remember is that the plan treats the corridor differently depending upon the sensitivities for the local conditions, for environmental conditions, and how people feel about the corridor. For instance, north of I-74, there's very different recommendations for how to deal with the corridor than south of I-74. And I will say, it was, it's been a real pleasure working with Rita Black and Susan Chavaria, because they've been very patient, have really striven to, strove to taking into account the public comments, and were very patient when we asked for lots and lots of changes. So with that, I'd like to introduce the staff for the Regional Plan Commission, and they have a short presentation.
Take it away.
I'm Susan Chavaria. This is Rita.
Rita Black.
To keep us straight. Robert gave a good basis for what we've done in terms of what is the plan. I'd like to talk to you about what the contents of the plan contain and also what possible next steps there are for you and also for us. So, I'll show you here. Jump ahead a little bit. This is the study area that Robert mentioned. It is just basically all of East Urbana, and goes from Ford Harris down to Old Church in about a half-mile east and west of Illinois 130. The existing conditions part of the plan is, basically has demographics, land use, transportation network analysis, and also environmental inventory and analysis. The future conditions part of the plan has a preferred alternative, which he pointed out as Figure 2-1. It's also in Part 4, which is the future conditions section. And we also explain in there the preferred alternative versus if we were to do nothing, the no-build alternative, what things would look like in terms of congestion and environment in about 20 years. This is the preferred alternative sheet that was the Section 2-1. It shows in different colors what projects would be included in the preferred alternative in terms of transportation. So the green section are roadway improvements that have no new lanes proposed, and you'll find all of those north of I-74. They include Olympian Drive, High Cross Road between Olympian University or US-150, and also Airport Road between US-45 and 130. In the blue section, there are bridge projects for the saline drainage ditch at High Cross Road and also at Cottonwood Road. For bicycle and pedestrian paths, we have four projects listed. It's one along US-150, another along Washington Street, which would actually be, according to what Public Works would recommend, on-street bicycle lanes instead of a shared-use path. The rest of the projects would be shared-use path unless it was decided later that with further study that something different like on-street bike lanes or something should be used. There'd also be another bicycle pedestrian path along Florida Avenue that would continue on along with the Florida Avenue extension between its current termini and Illinois 130. And then we would also have a bicycle pedestrian shared-use path along Illinois 130 between University and Windsor, and that has already been funded. And then the last section, or the red projects, are roadway improvements where additional lanes are being proposed, and that's to deal with congestion measures as well, just to make sure that we have the capacity for the anticipated traffic in 20 years' time. And so we have University between Illinois 130 and Cottonwood Road. We also have Washington Street between Dodson to Cottonwood. We are recommending that a new road be constructed approximately half-mile to the east of Illinois 130 between US-150 and Washington Street to help with some pretty big congestion issues around the Walmart area. And we're also looking at Florida Avenue being extended like it is planned in your current capital improvements plan, and also Illinois 130 between University and Curtis Road being expanded to four or five lane configuration. Are there any questions before I move on with that? Okay. The fifth section in the plan is the implementation plan, and in there you'll see a matrix that lists each preferred alternative transportation project, and it also gives what its relative priority is, high, medium, or low. It shows an estimated cost in $2,006, potential funding sources, what issues are being resolved, and how the project helps resolve those issues, and related goals and relevancy to the goal score. We had a previous matrix where we calculated how, how close to achieving the goals each project came on a scale of 0 to 100, and you'll see some of that also in one of the columns there in the matrix. And the last column is obstacles to implementation. So as an example here, this is the section of roadway improvements only with no new lanes proposed, and you can see where those columns come into play and how they compare to each other for each project. Those are the four sections of the, based on the different color-coded projects. Another part of the implementation plan is design considerations. An example of this for the presentation is landscape character and new commercial development south of I-74. Some of the recommendations that we came up with in speaking with the public and also based on some staff work that was done by the City of Urbana staff about design considerations for the Illinois 130 corridor, we'd like to see make bicycle and pedestrian connections between residential and commercial areas, provide transit stops that link to sidewalk systems, and do not conflict with bicycle or road systems, using landscaping to create distinct travel areas for motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians within parking lots and also adjacent to establishments, and to make the entrances and paved walkways lead directly to a bus stop where transit is available. And there are a lot of other design considerations that are in the plan that you can see. Some of them were created by the City of Urbana staff for the Illinois 130 corridor development area, and others were created by CCRPC staff and discussed in conjunction during a public workshop with about 60 members that attended the workshop. The appendices to the plan, we have seven of them. The first four are the technical background, environmental transportation analysis, the travel demand model report, population employment forecasts, and also capacity analysis software output. The fifth appendix is the Illinois 130 design principles that was done by the City of Urbana staff, and the sixth appendix is the public involvement efforts, which is what CCRPC did to involve the public. We had about six different public meetings and one focus group forum over the, over the study period. We had a thousand-plus-person recipient direct mailing list for invitations, and we had a website where all of our documentation was available. We did a news gazette ad for every public meeting, and we presented information in a variety of formats so that we can try to cover all the different ways that people can learn. We had comment cards available at all the meetings and also online, and we were always available throughout the study for questions and comments. And the last appendix is the public comment, and that's about the 450-page part that you see in your document. These are all the different completed comment cards throughout the study. It's if we did surveys, if we did any type of, you know, trying to gain input, that's all that's included in there. Some of the popular themes that we found in the public comment was that people did not want new development or improvements in terms of transportation or anything, really, north of I-74 along High Cross Road, and they wanted to protect existing residential areas. Generally, the public also said that if an interchange would be built, they would like it built at 1,800 East, which is two miles to the east of Illinois 130, instead of Cottonwood Road or Illinois 130 as a location. They think that mixed uses in commercial areas are okay for south of I-74, but not north. They like to see the natural areas and other sensitive areas like the UFI Research Lands protected, and they'd like to keep the traffic from the commercial areas south of I-74 away from north of I-74. So what does this mean for Urbana? We would recommend from here that you review your capital improvements plan to see if any of these preferred alternative projects need to be put in there, need to be prioritized ahead of ones that are already in there. We would also, everyone should continue to seek funding for improvements, especially for things like bicycle and pedestrian facilities that don't have, you know, a set funding source. Another one that we would suggest would be to do an interchange access justification report. That's the only recommendation we made in the Illinois 130 report regarding interchange, so that we can be in compliance with your current plan, but also say that we need to do further study for the interchange to see where, if anywhere, it should best be located, and that all the public comments related to the interchange that are included in this should be considered for that access justification report in the future. There's also increased emphasis requested for complete streets in Urbana, that we consider all transportation modes, pedestrians, bicycles, buses, and other vehicles on every road, and that might mean on-street bicycle lanes or shared-use paths or any variety of things to make sure that everyone is considered and everyone can safely travel. And we'd also ask that manage the number of accesses and types of accesses on Illinois 130 and other major roads to increase the safety as development occurs. The more accesses you have, the more likely it is that you're going to have a traffic accident or crash. The next steps for this project, we had the Plan Commission recommend this for approval for the draft last week. They made their comments, and we did take those into consideration. The steering committee, we will call together again, and we will take all the comments from the 30-day public comment period we had, as well as any comments from today, and also from the Plan Commission, to discuss those with them and to see if there's any changes that they want to have made. The steering committee, based on those changes, would approve the final document, and then we would bring it back to the Plan Commission and back to you, you the council, for final approval of the document. And at that point, it would be submitted to IDOT to close off the project file. At this time, we can take any questions or comments you have.
Charlie. I saw you. Can I take a guess? It's going to be about bicycle paths.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure that those of us who are bicyclists appreciate the complete streets concepts being included in here. It's an important thing for the future, I think, as, as we look at alternative transportation. Two questions. Looking at some earlier studies that you had and your, in your traffic counts and figuring out what we needed to do, which I now have a lot more confidence of after your success with Lincoln Avenue, by the way. I saw some early stuff that showed that Curtis, where it hits 130, has some problems. It's shown in green here under the preferred. I'm looking for the legend, but I don't see it here. So is Curtis still one of the iffy things looking out to the future? Yes?
Yes.
Exactly what, is it because we don't know what's going to happen on Curtis, or what?
Based on, based on the model that we have for the urban I area, and considering the opening of the interchange next year on Curtis Road, we're expecting to have a lot of traffic on that roadway. But because there are no improvements planned for that roadway, that's why you see, you will see if no improvement are done, a lot of congestion.
Okay. And then, could you, could you repeat what you said about, I know that, I know that right now there's a bike path, a shared bike path pedestrian thing in the works between High Cross and, along High Cross between 130 and, or along 130 or High Cross and, is it?
University and.
University and, and
Windsor.
To Windsor. Okay. Now, in terms of the east-west connections, we already have a bike path at Windsor, but there's nothing at Florida or Washington. Are Florida and Washington candidates for complete street-type things? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay. So
Further study would be required to see what, what would be feasible there.
Okay. And do you know what the current status of the rails-to-trails type, you know, bike path from, say, somewhere in, closer to downtown Urbana all the way to Danville along the railroad tracks is?
It's been a few months since I spoke with Tim Bartlett, who is representative of CCDC. The last I heard that they were still looking for ways to purchase the land and to be able to look into building a trail on it.
Thank you.
Mostly, I attended some of the public input sessions that were held earlier, and I was totally impressed by the creativity and the thoroughness that all these questions and all the public comments that were made have been kind of integrated into this report. It says in the Figure 2-1, which is the preferred alternative of transportation projects, it's the one that you just went through with us, with the green, the blue, the yellow, and the red tags, that the last one is Illinois 130, termini, University to Curtis, configuration is a four-lane with median. And I was wondering if your definition of median was merely turn lanes, or did it, is there a boulevard concept that's being proposed here? That was something that I thought was be a wonderful thing to advocate for the, this part of the highway, to have a fairly large median, possibly a planted one, or a landscaped one. And my, my report of reference is large parts of Woodward Avenue in Detroit, which is a medianed highway that is, supports, actually, four lanes on each side, I think it is, very heavily traveled main street into the Detroit area going north. And the medians allow very accessible turn areas for cars who wish to pull off into other streets or to make U-turns, you know, to return on the other direction. And it seems like it's an extremely useful way, and if we have the space to do that, and if we're already talking about a four-lane with median, I'm just kind of advocating for a larger planted median.
We are proposing a planted median there.
There is.
And we are proposing turning lane and major intersections.
Great. Okay, that's, I think, not only would that be useful and helpful to traffic, but I think it would also be a great purification aspect to this part of the corridor, which could look very, well, being commercial, of course, is expected, but very industrialized almost with signage and things that come up.
The width of the median, it will depend on the availability of right-of-way, and remember that within the right-of-way, we are also proposing the shared-use path, then it will depend on that.
I know that the interchange location was outside the scope of your report, but yet you did hear a lot about it. I wonder, obviously, we don't, I think that the AJR, the access justification process is a process that we undertake after we've already picked the one location that's appropriate? No, if, we can do that as a comparison between, okay.
That's, that's the main point of doing an access justification report. The intention is for IDOT, based on your comprehensive plan, to hire a consultant and do a study of all the different locations and segments, and determine which one is the best place to have an interchange.
It should be, it should be pointed out, though, that IDOT would not pay for that study.
And that the study costs more the more possibilities we throw up as options?
Probably.
Yeah.
Probably. Yeah, but through IDOT, you have to request the funds through IDOT. You have to probably send a letter to IDOT requesting funding, and then IDOT will request funds from the federal.
Thanks. And why would IDOT not be interested in funding that kind of a study? It seems like it would be the most appropriate way for them to focus on an appropriate place for an interchange.
They will be willing to move forward on sending any information to the federal highway, but is the federal highway the entity who pays for this kind of study?
Well, I
Go ahead.
Oh, I, for one, know quite a bit about this just through watching the disc that we were given, also because this is part of my ward. I have been very interested in the progress of it, and I just want to commend you ladies on your work and Bill Gray and just all the information that you've given the citizens of Urbana so that they could come to meetings, and that's just been really helpful to my constituents specifically, and just to the community, and I just want to say hats off, kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, I agree with Heather. I just wanted to commend you, and there's a particular few things I just wanted to mention that are in the report that I think the citizens really appreciate, because I know we heard loud and clear they were wanted. One was keeping the traffic and the development south of the interstate and protecting the sensitive areas north of the interstate. We've heard that loud and clear for years. The comp plan process really brought out that community consensus, and I appreciate that you grabbed onto it and have kept that guideline. The mix of biking and walking and transit, so that we have a shopping area where people can get to places on a bus or on foot, you know, I go to other towns like Bloomington Normal not to, not to pick people out, but, and you drive through the town, and there's no crosswalks and no sidewalks even to get across huge streets in shopping areas, and so, you know, people have to trudge through the grass at their own risk and cross huge streets without crosswalks. So I really appreciate that, and I know that the citizens of Urbana do, and also the design guideline aspect, that you spoke specifically, you know, not just about how many lanes of roadway we need here, but about how the buildings will be built and the lighting, and that you gave recommendations on those, I think, is, is the wave of the future in how we plan for all aspects of corridors like this. So, thank you very much.
Yeah. I guess, as a longtime bicyclist in this area, you know, before High Cross Road was developed as much as it is south of the interstate, it has been for years a major way for bicyclists to get out of town, going down to Cottonwood and heading north as well. So any connectivity that can be done in the future between university and over the interstate for bicyclists, to me, is relatively important. It just, you know, just need to get them across the, across the, across the bridge, and, and you're into nice bicycling, you know, in low-traffic areas. So I'm not sure if, I saw any reference to that at all, but I think it's, it might be important to include. Thanks.
We did hear numerous comments about wanting more bicycle and pedestrian facilities north of I-74. We did not include as a recommendation because of the right-of-way constraints that are there. It's not to say that will never happen, but it is to say at this point that it would be difficult to even make improvements in terms of a two-lane improvements to the basic roadway, much less make room because of the brown field woods and other sensitive areas that there.
Yeah. I think all that's really important to bicyclists at this point is, given, given the traffic that's there, it's relatively safe to bicycle. It's getting from, you know, if you have a, if you have a bike path to the intersection of University and High Cross, it's being able to go north from there over the bridge. You know, once you're, once you're over the bridge, that's it, you're on your own. But, but sometimes, you know, if there's a lot of, if traffic's building up, and, you know, if there's a lot of traffic coming in from the north, it just needs to be enough room for bicyclists to get through that section, particularly if there's a bike path to that. You don't want it to just end there and have to go half a mile to where you really want to go and have to fight traffic there. That's all. And I would concur with the others that I think this is a great study, and it's, it's an example of, you know, intergovernmental cooperation, which I've heard from a number of people that want to see.
Go ahead.
Just one last question. Then, is the public input session or time now finalized or complete, or did you say that there was still a certain amount of time where you're evaluating comments before you make your final recommendation?
Ended, the public comment period ended January 12.
Okay, so we're finished with that. Okay. Thank you.
I also commend you for your process. I went to one of your sessions, Kennedy's, and what Charlie just mentioned, our little group put together that we wanted a bridge with bicycle access. So my question is, where are those little workshop comments in these documents? In the really big one?
Yeah. It's Appendix 7.
Appendix 7. It's all about public comments.
Yeah, because one of the things that people who have tried to read it was suggesting that you would put page numbers, so if somebody sees something interesting, they'd be able to get a friend to look at it.
Any of you, after the meeting, if you'd like to have, just Appendix 6 and 7, which is hundreds of pages long. I didn't want to drop this on your desk, but you're welcome to have this if you'd like, in the paper copy.
Is there any more discussion? Thanks again, ladies.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll move on to ordinance number 2,007-01-006, and this is an ordinance adopting building and fire safety codes with additions, deletions, and modifications, and repealing certain sections of the city of ordinance, of the code of ordinance, the City of Urbana, Illinois, Chapter 5 of the Urbana Code of Ordinances. And before we start, I think Esther, Pat, did you want to speak on this?
Could you give up a little step first?
What? You know the drill. I said, you know the drill. You name your answer.
I'm Esther Pat from the Tenant Union, and I came here tonight to comment on two issues regarding the property maintenance code, the deadlines for compliance, and fines for landlords. When I ask tenants, what do you think of your landlord? The most common response I hear from happy tenants is, they're great. hear from happy tenants is, they're great, call about anything, and they take care of it that day. Tenders who have bad landlords more often say things like, they never fix anything. Now, I don't know of any landlord who actually never fixes anything, but what that statement is expressing is people's frustration with how long it takes to get their landlords to perform repairs. Sometimes when it's taking a long time, and the repairs are code violations, which most problems that I hear complaints about are code violations, people turn to the city for help. And in almost every case, the city gives the landlord 30 days. Now, some repair problems can take that long because of difficulty figuring out the source of a leak, or trouble getting contractors, or delay for parts. But for a whole lot of routine maintenance items, like hot water heaters leaking, toilets running, windows are broken, screens are torn, repairs that good landlords take care of same day, a notice of violation from the city is really nothing more than permission to the landlord to drag their feet for 30 more days. When a tenant files a complaint to both the Tenant Union and at the city, and then I contact the landlord soon after the complaint is filed, to say, how about you get that running toilet fixed this week, my heart sinks when the landlord says, the city said I have 30 days, why are you bothering me now? For those cases, when the only reason for a delay in repair is that the landlord just doesn't want to bother to do the work, and the work could actually be done the next day, a deadline shorter than 30 days, like maybe five or at most 10 days, would be much more appropriate, and I hope you will consider that for some of those basic repair items. The other issue I'd like to address is fines. I've spoken with some of you about this issue before, and, and my concern is not that I want to see landlords fined all the time, my concern is that I want to see landlords make repairs. And the way it is right now, as a practical matter, if a landlord ignores the deadline given by the city, there is no actual consequence. If a landlord messes around with you, and just brushes off the inspectors, and they take months before they do repairs, there are consequences, and if you look in the Property Maintenance Code, you see the section for fines. But think about this scenario. If someone requested an inspection today, it would probably be conducted tomorrow, that's one of the things we love about Urbana, building safety, they get right out there, and the landlord would probably be given until the 26th of next month to correct. If, on the 27th, the inspector came out and saw the violations had not been corrected, the landlord would get another notice to take care of it by probably March 15th. But if the work were not done by March 15th, the legal department's not going to be at the courthouse March 16th filing a lawsuit, and that's not anything unique to Urbana. As a practical matter, it's probably not necessary, because the work will get done. But if that initial inspection, done tomorrow, does not result in work being done by March 15th, the landlord could probably wait till April 15th, maybe even April 30th, to get the work done. So the tenants would have to wait three months, the city inspector has been shown no respect by this landlord, and the landlord suffers absolutely no consequence for doing it. I believe the City of Urbana can do a better job than that. When a tenant comes to the city for help, they should have confidence that the landlord's not going to get away with stalling for another two or three months. You would be helping countless tenants for years to come, if you would address this problem in the Property Maintenance Code with a system for tickets and fines for code violations. And I'll just, I just want to say one other thing, I think when we talk about this, especially since you've just been dealing with rental registration, that there may be some, maybe not confusion, but if you, if you're thinking in terms of an inspector showing up to someone's property, that, say, a single-family home that's never, ever been inspected, and generating a list of 43 code violations, that even if each one is something that could be done in a short period of time, that's just a lot of work, and do you really want to go finding all those people? In the tenant complaint system, which I understand it's about three to four dozen a year of those that you get, in those cases, you usually are not going to generate as big a list, unless it happens to be at a place where you haven't had systematic inspection before, and the landlord has already had notice of the repair problems. Sometimes people don't come to the city until months after they first reported the problem to the landlord. Sometimes people come after a few weeks, but I, look at how you want to do it, but I think that you might want to, in terms of the issue of fines and tickets, that are involved, these situations where the 30-day deadline has come and gone, and the landlord just hasn't done anything, you might want to look at the complaint inspections differently than the systematic inspection, in terms of how strict you are with landlords for actually complying with those deadlines, or at least for giving a consequence. But that's, that's the one that I think is most important, is when people come to you for a complaint, with a complaint, because they can't get their landlord to do the work, it really shouldn't take months after that. And I think if there were some penalty to a landlord for not taking seriously that initial deadline from the city, that more of the landlords who, who dance around that deadline would actually get the work done. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Esther? Mayor?
I know that Esther's concerned about this. We talked about it at the rental registration, Neighborhood Safety, and it was in the original ordinance, and I would like to see it written up and put in property maintenance, because that was the suggestion, that it be removed from rental registration to property maintenance. So I don't know if Jim Gitz has had a chance to look at the language.
That's a question for me.
The quick answer is, is that I've given some thought to the language, but I want to see their proposals, some of which I think members of the council have, and Libby and I would like to finalize that as part of the package for this week.
I believe that Libby and Gordon are going to tag team this. That being said.
Before I get started, I want to make sure, on the package you got at the last committee meeting, January 4th was the date of the memo, we do have the section on deadlines for compliance with code violations, that's on page, Roman numeral 9-2, starting on that, it's PM Section 104.6.1, and this will look familiar to you, because you did see it at one point in the rental registration ordinance. So those deadlines for code compliance are now in the Property Maintenance Code draft, and I think there's, may be a suggested amendment this evening to that list. Then, if you look at our update memo that ordinance appeared for tonight's packet, you'll see that we did provide you replacement pages for two items. One was an amendment by Brandon regarding specifically, explicitly adding mold to those substances for property maintenance, and then a simple deletion from our building code, since we do have a better location for that provision in the Property Maintenance Code. There is a placeholder in the PM code for the fine issue that would involve not just the court-ordered fines, but the quicker enforcement for exceeding those 30 days, so we have a placeholder for that. Any other updates?
Oh, no.
We're very interested, Gordon, we're very interested in moving ahead. This is several months of work, we have builders, and architects, and designers, and plumbers, et cetera, who work with the international code, and have been very anxious for the city to adopt international code series, so we are anxious to move ahead and get the up-to-date codes.
Could you repeat, you said Section 9 had the deadlines, can you tell me where it is?
Yeah, 9-2, I think, was where I found it, and you'll need to go to, yes, you'll need to go to your January 4th packet, and you'll, you will recognize the familiar sections that the task force went through, and then it came the council's part of rental registration. At one point, we pulled it out, it is in here.
So does that meet your concerns, Esther, the way it's written? Or have you not seen? Okay.
If I can help summarize, sorry, this, remember we talked about three-time series? One was life safety, which was zero to three days, and those are things that really need to be fixed immediately, and always, in fact, have been required to be fixed immediately, this calls it out. Second was quality of life issues, and with these, we have a time series of zero to five days. And these are also listed in number 3, 104.6.13. And I think what Charlie will introduce would be a fourth time series that would involve a replacement language for item 4.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm really happy with this. I think it's, it's almost done, and I know a lot of work has gone into it, and I appreciate all the work, and I think it's, with a little bit of fine tuning, we can get this over and done with. It may be that we, I don't know if we'll get it done tonight, because we are missing one bit of language, and that's the placeholder language of exactly how tickets and fines are going to work. So, is that something you want, could have ready for our next council meeting, or is it, do we need to just wait for our next committee meeting, which would be, what, February 11th or something? I'm trying to think when our next, we're, yeah, we skipped, we skipped the 29th, so our next, our next, you know, so February, February 5th is our next council meeting, two weeks from now, and then February 12th would be the next committee meeting. I mean, if you want this ready for February 5th, then, which I know the mayor's not going to be here for, then we need to have some rough idea of what the tickets and fines are going to be. Otherwise, we can, we can basically bless this with whatever we get done tonight, and just leave it, leave that one missing piece for the 12th, and finalize that on the 12th, and send to the council on the 19th. I don't know if that's timely enough for, for staff.
We would appreciate sooner, but.
That's what I was going to say. It's better for, for the people I'm dealing with, and are expecting to submit plans under this model code.
Okay, so, I know Jim wants to comment, so I'll defer to him for the moment.
The timeline is agreeable on whatever conditions you want. Here is our situation. I have Esther's comments. I know that there's some other language that's been discussed, I don't have the benefit of that. So the question is really going to boil down to, how fast can we get all of the different language suggestions that have been made, put them into a proposal, and arrive at consensus, not only with community development, but with the council? It's possible to do that by the next council meeting, it's not easy, but it's achievable. If there is some differences of opinion as to the language when we come forward to that, then the process may take a little longer.
Okay, well, I have one.
And by the way, I would have probably been chasing that very vigorously last week, but we were.
No, we know, we know where you were, so it's quite understandable. I guess I have one small change that I would propose to subsection 4, which I passed around, and I didn't keep a copy for myself, but I can look at it here, which is to split out, and I'm going to move this as an amendment. I think we've got, all the other language has been incorporated to date. This is the one concern that I have, that I raised last time, that I considered that there, there's a difference between a leak and a drip, and I've tried to put that language together here. I think it gives staff a certain amount of leeway to make that judgment here. And so I'm proposing that in subsection 4, that we split it out and create language that has corrections that need to be made within five to 10 days, and then all other violations, such as drips, to the same things that I previously referred to as leaks, and so on, get done within 30 days, unless appropriate extensions are made. So that's, that's the motion I make to amend this, and with that, all I'm missing are the ticket and fine structure. So I move this change to subsection 4.
Second.
It's been motioned by Charlie, and Brandon, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Brandon. I guess my one quick question was to Libby and Gordon, have you had a chance to look over Charlie's language, and does, does it make sense, is it clear enough which falls into which category, so that when you're writing up these notices, you know which are the five to 10 days, and which are the 30?
I think so.
Okay, great.
Okay, then that leaves us with the tickets and fines section. I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable moving to send this to council if the mayor is, assuming that we get something in a timely way that defines what the tickets and fines are. Now, we have a section here, 106.4 talks about violation penalties of, of fines of not less than $135, or nor more than $500, at the discretion of the court, so I'm not sure how that, that fits in with tickets and fines.
The sense that I've gotten from various sources is that, in addition to the fine structure, the court is pretty simple and straightforward. In fact, the usual fine structures, whatever the minimum municipality chooses to a maximum of 750, provided that it doesn't involve a criminal penalty, and each day can be a continuing violation. But my sense was, is that this proposal, people wanted to go further, and have time periods built in, and fines assessed for the failure to meet those time periods. In other words, administrative fines that were independent of the court, that might be enforced ultimately by the court, but that there was another part of this enforcement that went well beyond just simply what was going to be the court fine. That's the part which I need some additional help and input to craft.
Also, is there a way to have tickets?
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
The legal answer is yes.
Okay, so I, I think it will take a little bit more time, and I don't know, have you seen Charlie's language? Because we try to run things through legal.
I have not seen Charlie's language, if it's been sent.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm open to this being cleaned up, and, you know, appropriate legal, if it's not close enough there to, I mean, to change the wording a little bit, to make it fit right. I think I mimicked the same language, so I just split it out. So I think I've, I've got it pretty close to right. But I think the intent here is that, okay, we've got this structure of zero to three, one to five, five to 10, and so on, these four parts now. To get quick enforcement of an action on these items, I think the thinking is that the building inspector would be able to issue a ticket. You know, they go in, the inspection, the work's not done, and the time they have it, they simply issue a ticket, it's $135 or whatever, because the work hasn't been done, and, and that's, that's it. They get a ticket like a parking ticket, and, and then how that works with, but I don't know how that works with Section 106.4, the violation penalties. And so, you know, to me, it's, it's, gives, you know, gives staff the way to enforce these four, this time, time, this deadline system that they put together, and I'll be happy with this.
Libby?
I did think this would be in addition to the violations section, that we would still need that for other issues that weren't pertaining to the timeliness, so this would supplement the violations section.
Charlie?
Okay, I have a, I have a suggestion, then, a way to proceed. I would suggest that we send this to council, with direction to staff to bring us a final version, with a proposed ticketing system, that staff thinks will work, they can get it to us, we've got two weeks to work on it, and if, if the mayor is, is satisfied with it, then we can, before she's, before she has to leave town, then we, we go ahead and incorporate it, and, and approve this at the next council meeting. If it's not ready to go, then we simply defer it out of the next council meeting, and, and get it passed at the following one. Oh, you are, oh. Oh, you are, oh. Will you be in email contact at all? Will you trust us to put something together?
No, I'd like to see it, um, because it's, you know, it kind of a pet project, so.
Okay.
That's, that's the thing. I suppose what alternative is to pass the rest of it and have that be passed in. Is that too awkward?
It could be the first amendment to the ordinance.
If, if I remember right, that might be tricky, because we wanted to have that language inserted, so that it would actually be printed for distribution with that section where the placeholder was put right in. Is that, do I have that right, Libby?
Yeah, this was a section we wanted to hopefully codify with the code council. We could hold off on that effort.
I believe that they would, would assimilate it at any time if they needed to. It would not be unusual to, to amend the adopting ordinance. We've done it since the '94, we've done it six or seven times.
Mayor?
Mayor? One alternative, another alternative, would be to, um, not do it on the 5th, but have a special council meeting just before the committee meeting, the week after. So, that gives us one more week.
Is that soon enough for staff? Is that soon enough for you, Gordon? You're the one who's-
We, we just would have to see it to view that work.
Yeah, so we might be able to get it passed, uh, on the 12th. I think the, I think the consensus here is, I think we're pretty happy with this as it, as it is. I think people can start counting on it.
Right, well, we're telling people that they can count on it, so they're working that way.
Yeah, so, so, um, we should move this to council, um, on the 12th, to a special meeting on the council on the 12th.
Charlie, you made a, a motion, and then it was seconded by Lynn. Do we need to-
No, we, we approved that one.
No, we didn't. We didn't have, we didn't have a vote. We had a discussion, we didn't have a vote.
I'm sorry, I, I said Brandon's name, he asked a question, and then I didn't say-
Oh, you're right. We have, we have a motion on the floor, yes.
We have a motion on the floor. So, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now, do you want to make-
I'd, I'd like to move this to council, to a special meeting of council on February 12th, preceding the regular committee meeting, um, including all the, all the changes to date, with the insertion of a proposed, uh, ticket and fine system in the, where the current placeholder is.
And, and your motion is to forward ordinance number 2007-01-006, with the amendment.
All of the pieces that go together.
Okay.
You know, whatever those pieces are.
Second.
Second, okay.
Okay. We have a motion by Charlie, and a second by Lynn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will see this at a special council on the 12th of February.
So, so, actually, just to make it clear, we have an ordinance adopting, and we have an ordinance repealing, that are part of this. Okay.
Okay, we will, we will move on to number 13. This is a discussion of ordinance number 2007-01-003, and we have Matt Winkler.
We passed out a revised Exhibit A for your packet tonight, and there was a oversight that was caught by Brandon, on when the study session would occur, and that's before the development plan's submitted, which is different than what was sent out in the packet. And the memo here is basically addressing the concerns and comments that we received at council, I believe it was a week ago, or two weeks ago. So, you see, we have, uh, changes to, uh, the types of administrative changes that can be made to an approved development plan. The language that's added is consistent with other codes and ordinances for the city, so it provides more of a, of a qualitative framework for the zoning administrator, to determine what can be administratively approved. And we've also added language on a study session with the planning commission, which is strongly encouraged, although it's not mandatory. And this will be basically something where a developer could come to, they could vet their project in a conceptual fashion, and get input from planning commissioners public, and then, uh, staff would incorporate the comments that were, uh, brought up at this study session, and in their, in our analysis. And there's a number of, of wording changes, also contained within the memo, so if there are any questions from council, we'd be willing to answer them.
Are there any questions from Matt? Do you want to look over the new memo?
It's the one that's dated January 18th, 2007. No, it's only a couple of pages long. And we added a revised Exhibit B, which is all of the proposed revisions, just for clarity's sake, on what would actually be approved. And that included a number of small changes proposed by council.
Yeah, I just had a comment, but I, I thought it was really exceptionally wonderful to, um, to include the, the public notice of 15 days prior to the hearing, and to allow or to recommend a planning commission study session, so that there could be a little bit more public vetting of the questions sometimes that come up. And I think it addresses a lot of the concerns that the, um, the planning commission had about, um, developing, and how developments come to them, and what the, what input the public can have on these projects at an early state rather than a late state, which is kind of where we had been before. Sometimes, um, you can, you can get something going on the right, on the right track, early on, by having a little bit more input and information, and I think this really assists that, so I appreciate that.
Charlie?
Yeah, I guess, uh, you know, the, I think this is another one, I think, that's almost ready to go, and, um, I think we just need to sleep on it one more, one more council meeting. Would this be appropriate to also send to the special meeting on the, on the 12th, mayor, as opposed to waiting even longer?
Go ahead.
Because, uh, or do you want to have it in, in committee one more time?
Meeting in committee one more time.
In committee one more time, okay. I, I guess my only real concern is whether or not the study session should, you know, we've got the, is strongly encouraged, strongly recommended, I think is pretty good. I guess the only thing I'm still debating in my head is whether it should just simply be required. And I think that's the, that's the crux of this. I think everything else, to me, is ready to go, and I just, that's the one piece that I, that I, I'm not sure about committing to yet.
Lynn, and then- If we, um, I guess I'd ask you, Matt, if we require it, what are the downsides to that, to the potential developers?
I suppose there could be instances where maybe it wouldn't be wholly necessary to have a study session, although I think if it's a desire of the council to have it mandatory, that would be fine from staff's perspective. So, if that's the only holdout.
Libby? The reason we use strongly encourage was, um, the potential that there could be a situation where we're set to go, and to add the study session, certain projects could be seen as a delay, or could have us adding another planning commission meeting. It's just, it's an outside situation is all, but, you know, other than what Matt said, those would be the only- Do you see this as a, would, would you see that piece as a, something that would not, where developers wouldn't like that, or? Sometimes, the time path is critical. We're able to do much of what comes to the city in a, like a 45-day timeframe. This would add two weeks to that, and occasionally, that's it, very occasionally, that is an issue with like, uh, option on a property, or borrowing money, or things of that nature, or someone's coming from out of town. There are occasions when those weeks are precious, and that was sort of why we felt this would be something we'd want to see most of the time, but if we were to make it mandatory, there would certainly be occasions where it could be an impediment. Okay. Lynn?
Um, I, based on your response, I, I think it's more wise to stay with strongly recommended. I mean, any developer is going to want to vet this with us, and, you know, in order to get things passed, so I think most will obviously take us up on that. And, and like you say, if there's that instance where it could be a detriment to their project, I'd like to see us stay, stay fluid enough, so it could come and not have a two-week delay.
Robert, and then Dennis.
I agree with Lynn. I, I was, my comment too, I don't think it's necessary to take it, take it to that step, the level of being mandatory. I think if you leave it open, I think it gives, uh, some latitude to staff as well as the developers.
I would agree with that statement. I think that we want to make sure that we don't deter development in any, in any way, so keeping it with the strongly, strongly recommended, I think would be the better way for us and for developers to go. Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, I got two questions about that. One, it might be that, that strongly recommended be, could be for projects of a cer, of a certain capital outlay, uh, you know, that's above like a million dollars, or, you know, $750,000, or what, I don't know what it would be. It could be determined on either like, the property, the land area, or the, the outlay cost of the development expected. And if we were going to not do a study session, um, does that affect public notice? Would, would public notice then, your, of the project, then not allow a place for the public to, um, respond adequately? Because if I was, if there was going to be a public notice, you'd expect to like, come then to the study session to give input. And if not, does that mean that you would then be directing the public to put their input in during the commission hearing itself?
The notice we send out is for the hearing, and that's the first formal time it appears to the planning commission. And of course, if it's a complicated case, planning commission's likely to continue it, but that notice is just like a zoning notice, with the, um, newspaper notice, letters to neighbors, the sign. For the study session, it's purely informational, there's, um, it's noticed as part of the planning commission agenda, but not sent out, so it's not a formal notice, it's an open meeting, it's on the agenda, but it's more of an informal item rather than a public hearing item.
It just seems to me that if it was a really large project, you know, a significant project, that having a study session would be appropriate, and smaller projects, I think, you know, recommended or not, depending on size.
I think we would advise it for larger projects, absolutely. Mayor, and then Lynn.
Um, Libby, when we were, when this was first introduced, it was said that we were going to streamline things, but then it turns out that Champagne already has these provisions. And so, there's sort of a trade-off between saying you're going to streamline something, and that you're going to grease the skids, and eliminate public comment. And when you said about adding two weeks, are you comparing it to what was proposed, or to our current system?
Well, both, actually. I think our current system is unwieldy, because it has these two steps that are almost the same. The preliminary plan and the final plan essentially have the same requirements, so you're going through the process twice. I think what we're trying to do with this proposal is, um, reduce the redundancy, and encourage the developers to submit the best plan they can, and then take the time to review it carefully. And part of that, taking the time and doing the best job up front, I think the study session will assist, because, um, vet concerns, planning commission can, kind of in a more informal way, and members of the public who are at the meeting can provide input that will always improve the project. But the current system, it's not so much, you know, quality public input to improve the project, it's just going through these laborious steps that aren't necessarily resulting in a better project. As far as Champagne's process, I really think they use PUDs so differently over there that it's really difficult to compare. So, I don't know, I just think we're improving it more than streamlining it, there's just, there's many ways that this will be more functional, and a little less busy work, a little more quality work, hopefully. Lynn?
This is my second time speaking on this subject, and I would just suggest that we not put a, a number, a number in it, because I think then you could have developers, in order to get that faster number, to try to lower something right below the threshold, and I think that's getting into the minutia, and I think your plan's going to work for us. Uh, it'll be strongly recommended, we'll see, you know, 90% of cases, we'll have it, and there'll be some that we'll, uh, need to slip through, and, and we will need to respond nimbly, and we'll still have an opportunity to, to discuss it.
Agreed.
Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none?
Okay, well, then, I guess this stays in committee for, comes back to us in three weeks.
Right. Thank you, Matt, thank, thank you, Libby. We have num, item number 14, ordinance number 2007-01-019, and ordinance amending Chapter Four of the City of Urbana Code in regard to animal empowerment, adjudication of ownership rights, fines, administrative review procedures, and other administrative changes. Jim Gibbs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This ordinance is a cleanup of several ambiguities that we've encountered in the present animal control ordinance. Very briefly, the, there's a clarification of what constitutes an attack, which is an outgrowth of one of our administrative hearings. There's some additional language clarifying administrative review, including who pays for transcripts, et cetera, again, to flesh out provisions that have caused some ambiguity in administrative review proceedings in Circuit Court. There's a lot of issues that we've encountered when we've sought impoundment fees, which is a growing expense to the city. This cleans up impoundment language throughout, uh, the ordinance. It should be underscored that the effect of this would be to shift the cost of impoundment when it's a major expense to the violator, not to the city. Presently, the city carries those costs, and in one case, the city has been responsible for $6,000 in cost, and the court said, well, we don't think that your ordinance is clear enough on that. This language also is, is cleaning up some of the health issues, where there is a diseased animal, who pays for those bills when we need a termination. Finally, I noticed that the confiscation and dogfighting section, which has not been an issue so far in enforcement actions, had, in the old fine structure, we upped that. And we also provided for a provision for ownership termination when you have an abused animal, and it's pretty clear that there is a, a need for some mechanism for the court to adjudicate those rights, or to euthanize the dog in a case that it is not adoptable. There are three issues, when I circulated this for comment, that have come up. One is from Brandon, which indicated that there was on page 15, a minor subsection that needed to be renumbered, because it was listed as one of the criteria for impoundment, when it really only deals with cost. Second, the finance department identified some conflicts between what the ordinance stated in certain fines, and what our general fine code is, so we need to resolve which has priority there. The fine code, by the way, is the standard language of $135 minimum fine, up to $750 maximum. Finally, I've received a email today from our animal control officer, who suggested that there might, you might want to consider some type of a provision in this ordinance that states when there has been successive violations of cruelty, or other similar provisions in the ordinance, that they're barred from ownership for a two-year period of time. I haven't added that provision to the ordinance yet, because I wanted to hear the will of the council. So, there are a couple of minor amendments, but the attempt here is to, to do some cleanup of the animal control provisions, in light of our actual experience with that ordinance, both at the administrative hearing level and in court.
Is there any discussion, or questions, or emotion? Charlie?
Well, the taxpayers shouldn't be paying for, for a particular individual's problem dogs, or cats, or whatever, so I read through this pretty carefully. I like it. If there's additional work that needs to be done on it, um, again, you know, I'm ready to send this to council as it is, but, but if Jim wants to, we can do it to council, we can do the special council meeting, if you want an extra week, we can keep in committee.
The small amendments are easily done. This can be ready to go to council anytime. The bigger issue is a policy issue.
The bigger issue is a policy issue. Do you want to entertain the animal control officer? And I'll be happy to send you a copy of her email, her recommendation for some further amendment on barring repeated offenders from having actual ownership of dogs. There are pros and cons to that, but there's not that much work that needs to be added to this unless there's a wholesale rewrite decided by the council. So the timetable is up to you.
Robert?
Does the ownership issue barring then open up a can of worms for anybody legally?
I'm sorry?
Does it open up a can of worms by doing that?
I don't think so, for three reasons. Number one, there is a state provision that is somewhat similar. Number two, you have home rule power. Number three, you're not doing it arbitrarily, you're doing it based on some specific criteria. You know, you've abused an animal not once but twice, you've had adjudications, you have proven that there's a problem here. So the issue from the animal control officer's perspective, and I hesitate to talk for her, is that she states that she goes back and has to deal with the same people on repeated occasions and spends a disproportionate amount of her time there. So that's her recommendation, and I merely pass it on to you because that's really a policy decision for you.
Sounds good, thanks.
Charlie, and then Brandon?
I was going to say, Jim, so in terms of this additional provision, you would basically mimic state law?
I haven't spent a lot of time reviewing the state provision, but I certainly can look at it. I know that they have a two-year provision, so, you know, we can make it pretty close to that.
Yeah, I wonder if that's where the animal control officer is getting that thinking from, if she's used to working with that, you know, outside the city, in which case I think we should incorporate state law. Yeah.
Makes sense. Brandon?
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, as a dog owner, I think that makes sense. If somebody is repeatedly found guilty of cruelty or abuse, they should be barred, and if our animal control officer says it makes sense, I'd support it. So I guess if no one speaks up saying they're against it, then we'd probably like to see that language.
Charlie?
I move to send this to council with the additional recommendations that were made tonight.
Second. It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Lynn. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Page 15, this is a discussion about house demolition, review of current city policy. Charlie and Dennis?
I just raised it that, you know, Dennis and I got to chatting about this after our last meeting. We, you know, the issues were raised. We didn't have a good understanding of this. Dennis had a list of questions written by the next morning, which was pretty impressive, and staff has provided answers to these. Mostly this is to go off and think about how this works, and if anybody from the public needs a copy of it, they should see Libby. I'd like to thank Gordon Skinner for putting in the time on putting all this together. I think we need to digest it and then see if we need to make some changes.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the time that was spent answering the questions. You know, we've had, we've had a couple demolitions in the city recently. I had questions about notification, public notification and posting, and just how the city, I was curious to know how the city actually handles the demolition process and what the fees are, and I think that this is a good foundation for thinking and realizing where we are with the process, so I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Libby, thank you for putting the answers together to the questions that Dennis and Charlie had. Seeing no more items on the agenda and no more discussion, this meeting stands adjourned.